This meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. Can I have a board member certified closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Chen.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And, Mr. Riffle, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure thing. Please stand if you're ready.
Please stand.
Pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will officially open the public hearing on the FY 2026 Capitol Improvement Plan. However, we have no speakers on that this evening, and so that hearing is closed. And we are moving on to our WHRO presentation, and I would like to turn it over to my fellow board colleague, Mr. Riffle.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce some of our friends at WHRO today to present their annual report and talk to us about how they're good things are up to. So we have Mr. Birch Schmidt from WHRO's President and Chief Executive Officer, and Mr. Elmer Stewart, WHRO's Vice President of Education, and they'll present their update on education services and what's available at WHRO. So good to see you, Mr. Riffle.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. As, as Mr. Riffle mentioned, my name is Bert Schmidt. I'm the President of WHRO, and Elmer Stewart is my Vice President of Education. So if you ask the hard questions, I got back up here today. Before I talk about the reports, and you all should have this report, by the way, you get this annually, so if you don't have it, you're supposed to have it. Let me know, but should have all that. But before that, I just want to make a comment about Dr. Heron. She has been a great leader amongst the superintendents in the region. As you probably know, we gather at WHR with the superintendents on a regular basis, five times a year. She has chaired that group, and she has been a strong and visionary voice for many, many years, of her ten years. So we're going to miss her at the superintendent's meeting, but I'm very happy to say that she's going to continue on the WHRO governing board, so I'm not letting go of her. So I'm going to hold on to her tight and maybe even put her more at work going forward. But I just want to thank you, Dr. Heron, for your leadership and your friendship. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So I do come to you every other year. We give you this report once a year because you are one of the 21 school divisions that literally own the license to WHRO. We are the only media company in the entire country that's owned by collaboration of 21 school divisions. And so we all come together, and we do things once rather than 21 times. That way, we can save taxpayers money and improve services for students throughout the entire region, big and small. So this report is customized for you, but what we're going to do is show you the video, so I often just sit here and drone on for you, but we've played, put together a video per the request of the superintendents that'll give you a summary of our services. We've also provided the superintendent's office a link to this video, so you're welcome to share this video with the end users, which tends to be teachers. So if we could play the video.
WHRO stands out as the nation's sole public media station owned by a collaboration of 21 school divisions. This distinctive ownership model places education at the heart of our mission, influencing every aspect of our work. Our team of educators is committed to offering students, teachers, and families innovative, free, high-quality programs and services. One key service that WHRO offers is eMedia VA, Virginia's leading digital content repository. With nearly 100,000 free, top-quality instructional resources, eMedia VA provides educators and students with videos, interactive tools, games, lesson plans, images, and more. This platform is designed to enhance personalized learning and make classroom experiences more engaging. For our youngest learners, WHRO offers exciting educational activities to spark their imagination. Our three education vans visit elementary schools with programs tailored to Virginia's standards of learning, covering literacy, numeracy, scientific investigation, and technology. We also support parents and caregivers, ensuring children are prepared for kindergarten and set up for success in their early school years. For secondary educators, WHRO provides a catalog of 27 award-winning, customizable online courses and digital resources. These media-rich, SOL-aligned courses are designed to integrate seamlessly with various learning management systems. They offer flexibility for face-to-face, flipped, blended, and fully online teaching environments, enriching lessons with engaging content. At WHRO, we celebrate student achievements through competitions that showcase their talents. The Great Computer Challenge, for example, gathers school teams from across the region at Old Dominion University to tackle real-world technology problems. Another highlight is our regional spelling bee, where middle school champions compete at WHRO's studio for a chance to advance to the Scripps National Spelling Bee. The local competition is recorded and aired on WHRO each April. Elementary students also have an opportunity to shine through our PBS Kids Writers Contest. This competition invites young writers to craft and illustrate their original stories, fostering creativity and critical thinking. Our Student Advisory Board reflects our commitment to student engagement. This group of high school students offers feedback on WHRO's content and has opportunities to create their own, influencing our online courses and eMedia VA resources. We're equally devoted to supporting educators through our professional development programs. Our workshops and training sessions provide teachers with cutting-edge strategies and tools, empowering them to inspire and guide their students effectively. Visit WHRO's education webpage to learn more about how these amazing free materials, programs, and resources can benefit you. At WHRO Public Media, we're proud to partner with our local school divisions and the Virginia Department of Education to shape the future of education, one student at a time.
So as I mentioned, this video, the link to the video the superintendent's office has, or you can just simply go to WHRO's education website. It's available there as well. But the key is let teachers know about these services because they're the end-users. They're the ones that are going to bring digital content into the classroom, who are going to use the online courses, who are going to work with your early childhood learners and have all these opportunities. So we want to make sure the word gets out to everybody. As board members, the one thing in the report I'm going to refer to specifically is page 14, which is your return on investment. You invest in WHRO around $3 per student per year. Last year, you invested $41,000, and you received savings in value of $442,000. That's a 10-to-1 return on your investment. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any board member questions? Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, as a board member, I know a little bit more about the WHRO and their findings. Could you talk a little bit about the press stuff you all are up to? I think it's pretty important that you're doing local coverage of some events and things.
Sure, yes. So as we all know, the local newspapers, the Pilot and Daily Press, have shrunk dramatically ever since Alden Capital acquired, the hedge fund acquired them. So we, about four years ago, started up a newsroom, a small, mighty newsroom. We have about 10 people, but we did receive some recent funding, so we're going to double the size this year to about 20 reporters. We have reporters that cover Williamsburg now, finally. We do have an office right down the street. Hopefully, you all know this because we're about three blocks away from you. And our intent is to be an important source of journalism for the local community. We're not focused on national stuff. We're not doing editorial, but just important local stories. So, you know, you all know how to get ahold of us. If you've got stories, let our folks know. And, you know, I stay out of the content of the journalism, but we can pass stories on to the newsroom, and they can make those decisions. Thank you.
Can you, can you explain that, that return on investment? Those are great numbers, but it might not be, it's not clear to me what the, you know, with the $400,000 number of value, is it, is it the access to the content?
Well, if you look at page 14, and you'll see there's five line items that are, I'm sorry, there's a lot more than five. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, about 12 items. Each have a value. There are footnotes in the latter pages of the report. There's about two, two pages of footnotes that explain how each calculation is done. These numbers get vetted by the superintendent on a regular, about every five-year basis. And so whether it's eMedia or professional development or the online courses, and so the footnotes will go into the details of each of those lines and how they're calculated.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your presentation and for all the work that you do for our community.
Okay, thank you very much. Take care.
All right. We will move on to item 6.01, Announcements and Superintendent's Report, followed by a CAC report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This week is American Education Week, a week to celebrate the power of public education and our dedicated educators. We honor those who devote time and energy to helping every student reach their potential. Thank you so much for all you do this week and throughout the year in service to our students and community. While expressing gratitude, I would like to wish an early happy Thanksgiving to the WJCC Schools team for your tireless commitment to our students and school community, and to our community at large. Thank you for your steadfast support of our students, staff, and schools. School is in session next week, Monday and Tuesday, November 25th and 26th. All WJCC schools and offices will be closed, will be closed next week, Wednesday through Friday. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Ms. Chen?
Yep, I just have an update from our last CAC meeting. So that's our Special Education Advisory Committee for our board, and just wanted to share some of the goals that we've discussed for this year, and appreciate all of the parent advocates who participated, and would like to encourage more community members to come to our CAC meetings. We would love, as a board, to have more membership in that committee to help advise us in all things related to promoting and improving special education in, in our division. So some of the goals that we're hoping to dive into this year have to do with learning more about the benefits of AI for students with disabilities and IEPs in our division, supporting students who have sensitivities during our necessary safety drills, meeting the transportation needs of our special education students. A couple other goals that we've, we're discussing is implementing a student peer mentoring program and inclusivity and sensitivity training for our, our teachers. And the last thing is, we support the exceptional games that, that are an amazing event that happen at the end of the year. So if any of those goals speak to anybody here or anybody who's listening tonight, would love to have your participation in our, our committee. Our next meeting is January 8th from 5:00 to 6:30 in room 108, and we meet monthly, so we meet pretty regularly. And also, I want to just thank Dr. Brown and Ms. Cruz and Dr. Bo Master for their leadership and collaboration with us in this committee.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. All right, so we will now move on to 7.01, Student and Staff Recognitions. Mrs. Hunley, will you join me at the, on the floor?
Tonight, we are proud to recognize two achievements at Jamestown High School. First, can CTE teachers Charlotte Stowers, Sharon Sproudbum, and Robin Cornell please come forward? Ms. Stowers, Ms. Sproudbum, and Ms. Cornell are here this evening representing career and technical education at Jamestown High School, specifically as teachers of the economics and personal finance class. As part of the class, students take the WISE Financial Literacy Certification Test to demonstrate their knowledge in personal finance and financial literacy. Jamestown has been recognized by WISE, the working and supportive education organization, as a Blue Star School for the significant amount of students demonstrating proficiency on the certification test. Congratulations. Also tonight, Jamestown earned Silver Recognition in the 2024 AP School Honor Roll from the College Board. Accepting this recognition is Kirsten Daisley, Jamestown's Lead Counsel and AP Coordinator. The AP School Honor Roll from the College Board recognizes schools for advancing advanced placement access and success. Recognized schools must meet criteria for providing access to AP classes and exams. The amount of students scoring a three-year higher in the AP exam, which traditionally leads to college credit, and encouraging students to take AP classes throughout their high school experience. Congratulations.
I'm sure this is Dr. Heron.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to introduce our school spotlight for the evening, and it's Matthew Waley Elementary School, and invite Mr. Stott to the podium. Mr. Stott is the principal, and I believe you've got a guest with you this evening, Mr. Stott.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Heron, and the greater WJCC community. It's a privilege to introduce an exciting and enriching after-school program at Matthew Waley Elementary School, our Pre-Law Club. This program represents a partnership between our school and William &amp; Mary, designed to bring learning, curiosity, and fun into amazing experiences for our students. The Pre-Law Club offers our young learners the chance to explore basic law and justice concepts in interactive and engaging ways, from understanding the role of courts to learning about the importance of fairness and decision-making. This program offers, fosters critical thinking and a sense of civic responsibility. We're planting the seeds for future leaders, problem solvers, and informed citizens. While this program is made possible through the incredible collaboration of many, I would like to express my gratitude to the following individuals. Ms. Jess Gilligan and Ms. Maricia Perry, two outstanding teachers at Matthew Waley who embrace this program and serve as our club sponsor. Allison Rowley, the Community Services Chair of the Student Bar Association of William &amp; Mary, who helped bring this relationship, this partnership to life. Olivia Minowski, President of the Student Bar Association, for her enthusiasm and commitment to bridging the gap between college and elementary education. And Ms. Helen Teruki, William &amp; Mary Law graduate, who was the original founder of the club.
The Pre-Law Club is run by William &amp; Mary Pre-Law students. They come in with lessons each week, teaching the students the different parts of making a law, government involvement, societal involvement, and government.
It was designed to expose elementary students to the legal sphere, to kind of get them excited with how law works in, in America, how it develops, and how you interact with it.
You can't make up your laws. You have to stick with the laws the government made. If I will ever speed, but I would never, then I would know, then I would, I would still know the law, but I would still get pulled over for speeding.
I was interested in, by being in the Pre-Law Club, because I like law, and I want to be a police officer when I grow up.
It's a lot of student-centered work, where they get to really work through the process of it all, and get to see how laws affect us and how they come into effect.
No, we write the law. They decide what it means.
My interest in the law is that it can help people find their way through life, and it'll help people follow their rules.
I like to learn about new stuff, and this would be really new for me.
The kids are learning about the three branches of government on a state level and on a federal level. They are also learning about how laws can be revised. They also do a lot of decision-making activities where they are the judge, the lawyer, the defendant, and they work through the process, and they talk about those gray areas that may occur when dealing with the law, and how to navigate it in a safe, healthy, and lawful way.
Like, this game we're learning this week is about how we interact with others, and we get to tell them how they're interacting with people, if it's unwanted or wanted.
They learn how to communicate effectively with each other without angering the other person, but also being able to speak their mind and their view. Sometimes, they have to learn how to take a stand when it's important to them, but how to do it in a civil way.
Role-playing allows them to be in the position to make the laws and work through that process. We had each branch go through their part of making the law and making its way up to decide if it becomes one in its totality. My hope that this opens them up to see that their voice matters in their community, and also just to give them exposure to something that they may have an interest in but not know a lot about.
Thank you, Mr. Stott and Ms. Gilligan. That was, that's a fascinating program that I had never heard about. That's amazing that the kids get, get to learn that in school. That's really wonderful. And special, special appearance by a fellow board member's daughter a few times.
If I have a point of privilege, I would just say that my daughter is in that program, and she loves it. And so the conversations that we've had at the dinner table, it's just wonderful to see as she's growing and learning. And we were in DC, and so we were able to actually, like, show the three branches of government as we drove past the House and the White House and the Senate, and as well as the Supreme Court. So I'm just, it's a pleasure to have that in that school, and it's wonderful for the kids. So thank you.
Wow, it's amazing. All right, we will now move on to our 8.01, Public Comment. I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Donner.
It is at this point at our, it is at, it is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any audible demonstrations during the speaker presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated two minutes to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair, and my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner.
Our first speaker is Jacqueline Bridgeforth-Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Heron, so good to see you. I'm Jacqueline Bridgeforth-Williams. I'm the founder and executive director of The Village Initiative, and I was so encouraged last night to see uh community members, uh aspiring teachers, folks from the school board, and so many people come together to join us as we screened again um our film, Voices of Integration. We partnered with the William &amp; Mary School of Education to show the film, and the film is a moving and powerful documentary about the first integrated class, fully integrated class, to graduate from WJCC schools. I am so encouraged to see that there are folks on the school board who have taken the time and the effort to come and view the film and engage with us and not only see the film once, but see it more than once. And what you see when you come out to see it more than once is every time you walk away, there's something more that you take away. And one of the threads that I uh saw so strongly and began to see is healing. You know, the fact that it is important that we heal as a community in order to be able to move forward. This year's uh week of education, uh month of education is about equitable and safe and just schools for all children. And I think that the importance and significance of seeing the film and knowing the history of uh what it took for the children to integrate the schools, because the children bear that that weight. And some of those folks are still healing today. And we also talked about engagement, engaging your community. And if you sit in these seats, then you must come out into the community and engage. We worked so very hard to create this film so that we all could know the power and the impact of what it took to integrate the schools, and we encourage you to come out. And uh some of the other things I know that we're going to talk about tonight is about the name change of the school. And we also encourage you to engage in the community and understand the importance and significance of the school, this school, James Blair's name being changed, not only because of uh just getting another name, but because of what James Blair represented.
Thank you.
Thank you also very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Catteran.
Good evening. I'm Joe. Um I'm here speaking on behalf of the campaign for honorable and inclusive school names. Uh thanks, Jackie, for the shout out. Um yeah, we're following up on a request that we submitted to y'all a couple of months ago, asking for James Blair to be changed to James B. Tab Middle School. Uh the first thing I want to talk about is just that um I heard that my co-organizer, Mary Lassiter, got the message essentially that she couldn't speak at during public comment anymore because of where she lives. I understand that there are rules, but I think, you know, there's exceptions to every rule, and I think the fact that, you know, Mary was part of the first fully integrated class at James Blair sort of gives her a bit of a privilege uh to weigh in on matters at the school. And like even if she can't speak during public comment, I think that the least that y'all could do is try to engage with her more on this issue over email or whatever. She's a wealth of information. She's very wise. I've learned a lot from working with her. Uh the second point I want to make is that I heard that there's concerns about uh the namesake that we're proposing, James B. Tab, after Reverend James B. Tab Senior, who is a community leader here. He was honored by the Virginia General Assembly. And I I'm not going to address what those concerns are because I think they're a little ridiculous. Um but I just wanted to point out that I think it's sort of telling how how quickly and easily these concerns were brought up with uh James B. Tab, who is a black man, um and meanwhile, James Blair, who enslaved generations of black children and did a lot to institutionalize slavery in Virginia and in the South during the colonial US. No concerns about him. But anyway, so we are really urging y'all to form a committee uh to get things going. It's, like I said, we submitted this a couple of months ago, um and to really uh solicit input from the community, as Jackie was saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catteran.
Our next speaker is Karen McLean.
Dear school board members, the 10th grade students of the three high schools will be having their Family Life Class in January. Last January, everything was not ready for them as the old material was still in in March, uh till March. And many of make sure the school binders and the computers and the websites all have the up-to-date material for parents to view. According to the Code of Virginia, a complete copy of all materials not subject to copyright law and the audiovisual material shall be made available through any parent portal and kept in the school library or office and made available for parents to review. Uh by the Code IIA, school boards are to notify parents of any instructional material that has explicit content and provide non-explicit content if parents request this. Code BBA says it is a school board is determine is to determine the studies to be pursued and the methods of teaching. Most Family Life Class material is available in at least one high school and in central office in the central office binder computer I viewed recently. Make sure all the schools have all the material ready to view. The parents are told about the class thirty days in advance, not just last August, and are told clearly how to look at the material of on the school website and how to view it in the school in the central office with the new tech sex trafficking material if they choose. Make sure parents are clearly told told about the oft uh opt-out forms and that are on the website and how to get to them and how to look at the website and also um to have forms available in the school offices. Parents should be told that they can talk to their teachers and ask what parts of the curriculum they will be teaching. Their parents and guardians have the right to excuse their child from all or a part of the Family Life Education. There are possibly explicit content in the Avalon Abuse Survey and in the Prevention Project with the sex trafficking. There's two questions in Avalon uh that say, have you sent or received nude pictures and has anyone ever made you engage in a sexual act when you did not want to? As it is anonymous, it does not really help the students to give answers to these questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean.
Our next speaker is LaCristal Rivers.
Hello, my name is LaCristal Rivers. Um I'm a mother of four, and all my kids attend WJCC schools. Um tonight, I wanted to speak on um bullying. I feel like it's not being taken seriously. Um it's I feel like all schools are supposed to be in no bullying zone, and I feel like it's not being taken seriously. Um there were some situations with my daughter that I know we can't speak on, but it resulted in a physical altercation that could have been prevented had the staff and the school board taken it more seriously. Uh my daughter has been bullied for several years, and I feel like it's just not being taken seriously. Um everything that happened could have been prevented. Um I feel like the staff wasn't really that much of a help to me. Um I feel like I was very much targeted. Um and I don't know what else to do. Um thinking about starting my own campaign against bullying because I feel like every child should go to school and feel safe, and they should have a safe space. Um my child should have the opportunity to or me talk to somebody about when she goes back to school from her suspension and felt being in a safe environment and not having to worry about these things happening again. That has not been discussed. The only thing that has been discussed was her punishment for getting in a fight. Yes, her getting in the fight was wrong, but I feel like um every the whole thing was wrong. Everything could have been prevented, and I just felt like nobody took it seriously. And in today's world, things are happening, and kids are getting killed, you know, school shootings, all that is happening these days. And I feel like bullying, brothers making faces, making comments, it all needs to be taken seriously because it can happen, something can happen dramatically that everybody will not want to happen. So I feel like my voice is not being heard. I feel like I have nobody to turn to. My back is against the wall. Um I grew up in Ja- day Williamsburg, and I never had these issues when I was in school. And it's sad to see the turnaround in this generation of teachers and staff that are not doing their part to help these students out. Um it it really breaks my heart that my daughter is scared to go to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivers.
And our final speaker is Terry Carmen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Terry Carmen. I was born, raised, and received my primary and secondary education here in the Williamsburg-James City County School System. I am a retired special ed high school teacher. It gives me great pleasure to submit this evening the name of Reverend James B. Tab Senior, also known as the Dean of Preachers, to be used as the new name for the James Blair Middle School. I knew Reverend Tab as a child, as he and his wife were friends of my parents, Reginald and Inez White. Um not only was Reverend Tab a well-known and highly respected pastor of the Ironbound and Strawberry Plains community, but also for the city of Williamsburg. Through his ministry as the pastor of Mount Placid Baptist Church and his civic duties for this city, Reverend Tab worked tirelessly for the people of Williamsburg. His progress and legacy continues throughout the city today, and it's only befitting that he be recognized and acknowledged for his good works in such a historical way. Thank you for this honor.
Thank you, Ms. Carmen. I think that was it. That concludes our public comment. All right, we will now move on to our consent agenda. It is quite lengthy, so you'll have to bear with me as I run through the list. Um we are looking at item nine point zero one, approval of financial report and monthly bills and payroll for October twenty twenty four, nine point zero two, approval of minutes from uh the October fifteenth twenty four meeting, nine point zero three, approval of minutes from the November twelfth twenty four meeting, nine point zero four, approval of minutes from the uh uh November fifteenth twenty four special call meeting, nine point zero five, approval of revisions to policy BDDC, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination, nine point zero six, approval of revisions to policy BDDH slash KD, Public Participation at School Board Meetings, nine point zero seven, approval of revisions to policy GBE, Staff Health and Safety, nine point zero eight, approval of revisions to policy GBECA slash KGC, Tobacco Use on School Property, nine point zero nine, approval of revisions to policy GCBD, Staff Leaves and Absences, nine point ten, approval of revisions to policy GCDA, Conditions of Employment, nine point eleven, approval of revisions to policy IFB, Pilot Research and Experimental Projects, nine point twelve, approval of revisions to policy IGAE slash IGAF, Health and Physical Education, nine point thirteen, approval of revisions to policy IKAA, Final Examinations, nine point fourteen, approval of revisions to policy JFCF, Alcohol and Drugs, and finally, nine point fifteen, approval of revisions to policy KG, Community Use of School Facilities. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Ms. Holler?
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
All right, now for our individual action items, ten point zero one, approval of personnel actions. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve personal actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Chen.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
Uh ten point zero two, approval of Program of Studies for twenty five, twenty twenty five, twenty six.
I move to approve the Program of Studies twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
Ten point zero three, approval of purchase requests for student-use laptops from Lenovo. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the purchase request for student-use laptops from Lenovo for a total cost of one million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
Ten point zero four, approval to purchase request, approval of purchase request to replace security cameras for fifty school buses from Sony Merry Men Incorporated. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase request to replace security cameras for fifty school buses from Sony Merry Men Incorporated for a total cost of two hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred fifty dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
And ten point zero five, approval of revisions to the school board's op uh standard operating procedure. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, please, go ahead, Kim.
Madam Chair, I move to approve revisions to the school board's standard operating procedures as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
Right, now we will move on to some information and discussion items, eleven point zero one, oh, did I miss something?
Two, ten point six. Student case.
Oh, I'm, oh, my apologies. I have not refreshed from before, so I don't have that in here. Sorry about that, everyone. Okay. Item ten point zero six, approval of decision regarding student case number two-three-two-four dash zero-zero-four. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to readmit the student to WJCC in a program to develop to be developed by the superintendent, but not into a comprehensive setting.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
For Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
Okay, sorry about that. Now we will move on to eleven point zero one, Fiscal Year Twenty-Six through Thirty-Five Capital Improvement Plan Discussion.
Well, Madam Chair, we have no additional information to present tonight. It's uh the time is just for the board if they wish to ask any additional questions.
Okay. Board members, do you wish to ask any additional questions about our capital improvement plan? No? Okay, I think we are okay on that. Um item eleven point zero two is is ours. We are presenting the school board evaluation tool uh for discussion. This is something that occurs annually. The school board evaluates itself at the end of every year. Um and so there's a um a form that's that's in there that you will see. It's provided by VSBA, asks specific questions, and we will we will all um evaluate that in the coming fill that out evaluation out in the coming weeks and um compile it and see how we all feel like we did as we evaluate ourselves and each other. It's it's a good exercise for self-reflection. It's always a a good thing to go through. So um are there any questions from board members on that? We can certainly explain the process offline if needed. Okay. All right, then we are coming to the end. We will come to um board member comments. Start on this side. Ms. Chen, would you like to make any comments?
Sure. Um I um.
Sure. Um, I, um, wanted to, um, start by thanking, um, Ms. Aller for helping me reach my goal this year as a first-year, uh, school board member of being able to visit all of our schools. Um, so it has been an absolute pleasure and delight of mine. Um, now, when I hear the name of our school, I can, um, see the building, I can, um, know the administrators, I think of the students that I saw, um, all the highlights that I was able to see, so. Um, that, that was definitely, uh, thank you very much for helping with that. And, and thank you to the administration at each of the school. Um, the visits have been lovely. Um, and, uh, today, I'll just speak, um, on one today. Uh, this, this is a second visit to Lafayette High School, uh, with Mrs. Hunley. Um, and, uh, we were able to do our visit, um, with Amanda Batten, our House of Delegate, one of our House of Delegate representatives, um, and also a city council member, um, who's incoming. Uh, so, um, we got to observe, um, some multilingual students, um, learning structured literacy. Um, we got to hear the band. Um, so it was, it was really, this is just a one, one of many school visits, um, this year that, that have highlighted, um, how, how wonderful our, our schools are and our community is working. So just wanted to always take this moment to remember all the positive things and to celebrate, um, what is going really well in our schools and to wish everybody, uh, a happy Thanksgiving, um, next week.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Jump around over here to Mr. Riffle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to reflect on, um, I attended the Voices of Integration thing, um, or screening yesterday. Um, and this was just important as a member who's not from, I think Ms. Donner actually spoke about this in her time on the panel. Um, and I, I didn't go to school here in Williamsburg, but I, I did use school in Hampton Roads. And I have some idea of what integrations was like from my time and learning about it in school and some through the work I do in my day job, but, um, it was interesting, it was very eye-opening and interesting to sit next to some of the people in our community who went through that. Um, I, I spoke to some of the class of sixty-nine members and then also some of the former educators who were part of that, who were teaching at Berkeley, um, high at the time, that then moved to, um, James Blair High, which is, there's a lot of different names that, of course, have changed at the time to now. Um, but it was something that I think made me reflect on, kind of, we, we do have, um, some things to work on in our own division, like we've of course made, uh, large strides since that time and, and I, and I, you know, we have, do have a disproportionate amount of students who in our division who are still, um, disciplined the wrong. I, I don't want to lower our standard for our division on disciplinary action, but we do have a, a rate that is set to us and told to us by the VDOE that we are higher, um, disproportionately, in disbanding some of our students, and that's something that is still of a concern to me as a board, so. Uh, I think it's a good time to recommit to kind of, you know, trying to work towards fixing those things and then being a voice that I had said I was going to be, uh, on this board for our community. And so I, I'm thinking about, you know, as our, we think about how we're gonna I guess, review ourselves and our, our own actions as board members. It's important that we think about some of the things we want to see change the next year or so, like, you know, we've all kind of got our footing and, um, it's something I will move to be more serious about it and when it comes to goals and understanding like what our power is of the school board and how we as colleagues can work better together to, to get more results for our students. Um, yeah, it's been weighing on my heart for the maybe past day or so, and it's been something I talked about. My, my boss, uh, Delegate Ward, um, has went through integration as well. She, she called herself a Brown baby. Um, she was born after, the year after uh, Brown was support education, so she was fully integrated when she was in school and we, we spoke about it today and some of the products I worked on with, like the Green Book with her and just kind of maybe telling the story of our history here in Virginia. Uh, it is a long and hard history of our state and it's interesting to hear how it's gone through the dynamics and there's still so much hope and encouragement that we've heard from our community and, um, it's, it's shame to see the strides we've made as a board. We, we are quite diverse. We have a good perspective of how education is done in our community, but it doesn't mean we understand what has happened in our past, so. Um, I, I do want to be the, the member on our board who does stand up for, maybe since the main, the name changes, I, I was a part of the committee William Mary when they did that and it took a lot of work to get to the names that we ended up landing on, and we did not change all the names at our school that quickly. I know it's just one that we requested, but it is a larger process that I think our board needs to talk about in our retreats to, to really kind of develop how that would work with the public, because you do have to take a lot more stakeholder than just being one name presented to us. Um, it, it comes with a lot more tasking for us when it comes to budgetary needs and, and I don't think anyone here is saying no to this issue, and I'm, I'm not trying to speak for my colleagues, but it, it is a larger task than just changing some signs out and then doing this other thing. So I, I will commit to that as somebody who will stand for this and then, and try to work towards what that will be, but it is, it is a large lift for our community. It takes as much as us to work here at this board, it takes a lot of us, you know, we talked about this last night of like, the community has to show up and want to be a part of this with us, because the name we pick and whether, how, or if we change the name of the school is important as well, so. Because that's, that's a narrative. It's, it's how we get there. It's, it's kind of how this process works. Like, you have to heal, you have to go through some of the things Miss Spirit Force Williams talked about earlier. Um, it is not something you're just gonna just do. I mean, action is what people want, but action doesn't mean you've accomplished something. It means you've, you're just doing things, like you have to then set goals and what does that mean, so. Um, I think it's something we're good at here as a board. It's one of our strengths, so. Um, in closing, I just want to say thanks to my colleagues for the time we've had, I think, in this year, um, as we, we only have one more meeting left between now and the end, and so it's been fun to do this and I'm excited for the full budget cycle to come through and get the spin out with Dr. Herring and, and listen to some more expertise at that, and I'm interested to see some of our requests that we have from our members when it comes to presentations. Um, and I'm just excited for what is ahead for our division and, and I also want to just, I guess, speak about some thing. I, I was also at schools on Friday last week or Thursday last week, I did interviews with some of our students. Um, and that was a great experience to just hear from students and how remarkable they are and what they're up to and, and some students don't know what they want to do, but they, they, they're excited about their own, you know, they're fifteen and a half or sixteen, they have a job and you know, thinking about like where I was at that same time and it's just great to see that they're on par and like willing to speak to adults about themselves, and it's hard to do. I mean, it's hard to answer questions and, and be proud of maybe what you've accomplished and put it on paper and, and then speak to it and then have a motion behind it, like. You know, it, it became very large task for, as we talked about it and such, but uh, I do meet a gentleman who, um, worked at Chick-fil-A like I dated when I was in school and he said he wants to become a chef, but he's not in the kitchen. And I was like, well, maybe the first step is doing that, and we, we talked through it a little bit more, but he has a serve safe and so. But he was just like, I don't really think it's like cooking to me. It's like, it's just some recipe some, some guy made and I had the, it's just, he's like, it's not cooking that I enjoy, and and so we talked about like what, how, you know, it was just very interesting to hear his perspective as a young person about this and, and how we didn't even think it was like, you know, something he thinks worth, he was like, it's something I want to do, but I want people to know, and I'm like, okay, you know, but it was just encouraging to hear like, you know, like different perspectives. There are students that like want to know that they're going to Yale and doing this and that, and there are students who are just excited to, you know, make Thanksgiving dinner for their family, and that's like maybe what they see themselves doing in the future, um, for other people, so. I did encourage them to become a cafeteria worker in our school, and I did the whole nine yards, but it, it is, it is important work, and I think it's, that was maybe the best time I've had as a board member when I visited a school and you know, it was, it was an hour and a half, but it was time well spent, and so, um, so thank you for, I don't, I, the name escapes me right now, the, the administrator who put that on, I think it's Miss Thrift is her name. Um, and so that was awesome. I initially did it across the three high schools and, um, and I know that's something board members will like to attend in the future, so. So that's, that is my time, Madam Chair. Um, thank you for indulging that.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Uh, Mr. Hosang?
Excuse me. Um, last week I had the opportunity to visit, uh, Berkeley Middle School. Um, I was, went there with Ms. Chen, um, and she said that was her former stomping grounds, uh, so it was a sort of a reunion for her go- uh, going back. Uh, we also, uh, had Ms. Larson from the Board of Supervisors and Ms. Ramsey from the City Council of Williamsburg, uh, with us. Um, so it was, it was a great visit seeing the school, and as Ms. Chen was saying, it, it's good for us. We've heard about these schools. We, we know that the schools are in Williamsburg, James City County, but we don't necessarily know exactly where they are and what they do, so it's nice to get out and, and to see these schools. Um, it, the one unique thing about, um, Berkeley was they allow their students to go outside to have lunch. Um, and the principal was telling us, even when it's thirty degrees out, you have kids going outside to have lunch, because that's the time they can get outside and they can sort of get away from the school and sort of just relax a little bit. And I, I just thought that was, um, kind of neat and, and hopefully maybe we can get some of the other schools to do the same thing. I want to give a very special shout-out, um, to the fourth grade students at Stonehouse Elementary School. Um, this past week, Dr. Heron, Ms. Hunley and I attended the Veterans Day celebration that they put on. They put this on each, each year. Um, and when my daughters went, we had maybe half the gymnasium, um, seated and filled. This year it was completely filled with chairs and people standing in the back. Um, it's just such, uh, I, I can't describe the show. I, I don't know if Dr. Heron and Ms. Hunley can do a better job, but it's just an amazing show that they do to honor the veterans, uh, for the family members of the students there. Um, it obviously holds a special place in my heart. My student, my, excuse me, my daughters went there. Um, and so I got to be recognized, um, with all the other veterans, uh, when they do their the Think a Veteran slideshow where they put the pictures of your vet- of the veterans, whether it could be your grandfather, great-grandfather, uncle, cousin. Uh, but they put all the veterans' pictures up there. Uh, they go through, they do a service medley where they play the, the songs for each of the services, and so if you're a veteran, you get the, the chance to stand up and be recognized. It's, it's just a very touching, moving, special program. Um, and, and I know there's other schools that, that do something similar. Um, again, my experience has been with, uh, Stonehouse Elementary and it's just a special, uh, event to go to. Um, and I look forward to doing that in years to come, and they've been doing this, I think they said, for twenty-three, at least twenty-three years, twenty-four years, something along those lines, so I have a feeling it's going to continue in the future, so. Those are my announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Mrs. Hunley?
So I was at my stomping grounds, um, by myself. I went to Stonehouse and, um, my goal was to meet every new teacher that was at Stonehouse and to, um, make sure, you know, ask if they were getting the support they needed, and they all had raving reviews about the launch program that we have for mentorship. And, um, they had no suggestions. It, it was all good and they couldn't even think of anything to suggest to make it better. And so that was very comforting to, to hear, and one of the students went through Stonehouse when I was there, so. She went all the way through kindergarten and now she's teaching there, so that, that just blew my mind, but, um, and, and I loved the presentation with Matthew Whaley. Uh, I think about when I go into schools, how far things have come. I think when I learned about anything judicial, it was through that uh, bill sitting on Capitol Hill and you read, you sang that song on Saturday morning, and that's how I kind of learned through school rock. And, um, even the posters at Stonehouse, they just got, uh, finished having elections for the student SGA or something, and kids like we used to write, just vote for so-and-so for secretary. Well, now they have digital pictures of themselves and videos attached, and so things have come a long ways. But I enjoy getting into the schools because I see how well our students are doing. And then just in closing, um, you know, every day we wake up, it's a blessing and we have so much to be thankful, more to be thankful for than not, so I hope everybody has a blessed and, um, special time with their families and come back safely from Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Mrs. Donner?
Um, I, I, um, I just, I'm sorry, I'm having a, I'm very tired today.
Okay.
Um, no, I just want to just thank, um, all of our teachers and all the work that they've been doing. Um, I, this year I didn't get to do the, uh, I usually get, have the opportunity to do the, the interviewing and it, it's always just a wonderful time, so I'm glad so many of our community members were able to make it. Um, also went to the Voices of Integration and had the opportunity to be on the panel, and I think it's just really important. Um, especially as many of us, I think, on this board, I don't think any of us grew up here. And so I think that opportunity for us to understand the history of WJCC and how that impacts today, um, is just really important. So I was glad to see a number of school board members there and just encourage everybody who hasn't had the opportunity to see the film, um, to see the film. And otherwise, I'm looking forward to all of the winter band and string concerts, and there is a plethora of, um, arts should you love listening to children play their instruments coming up. I will be at the Matthew Whaley Band Concert, so looking forward to that. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Um, I enjoyed visiting, uh, Jamestown High School along with, um, Ms. Chen. And, um, just always very impressed by Mr. Townsend and everything he's got going on at, at Jamestown. He's, he runs a very tight ship and it's, it's evident that it's going well for them. Uh, we got to see the interviews. We actually got to see Mr. Riffle interviewing, um, and just take in that as a whole. Um, I believe that that was br- brand new when I, I think it was brand new the year I started on the board three years ago, and so within just three years, it has exploded. Um, the, the fact that so many students participate and, and the fact that so many community members participate is really wonderful and it's, it's a great, um, intersection of our broader community and our schools, which is always wonderful to see because we are one community. Um, and I also saw the, um, the screening of the film, uh, Voices of Integration. I too, I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said, but I too would encourage anyone who hasn't seen it to see it. If there are other opportunities, I know they screen it periodically at the library or different places. Um, anytime you have the opportunity to hear history firsthand from people who lived it, um, I think you should just take that opportunity. Um, we don't, you know, th- those people will only be in our community for, for so long, hopefully a very long time yet to come, but that only the people that are currently still living can be, give firsthand accounts of history, and that was a significant time in our history and, um, is, is very important to hear and understand, um, the different perspectives, so. With that, um, I will move on to our oh, and happy Thanksgiving, of course, to everyone. I am very grateful for, we're coming up to a almost the end of the year. This is our last, um, regular meeting in this gym for this year. And, um, I, I am thankful for all of my board colleagues who have supported me and supported each other. Uh, we all know that we're a new board, I'm a new chair, new vice chair, new proponentarian, everyone in, in their role on this board is new. And I am grateful for the teamwork and the support because none of this happens, um, as in, with, with one person. We are incredibly, incredibly grateful for Ms. Aller because none of us could do anything without her. Um, incredibly grateful for Dr. Heron and her leadership and for all of our amazing senior staff, um, who support us and provide information and do so much work. Of course, on behalf of the students and the families, but also for us as board members, um, support us so that this can all look as smooth as possible, and so we appreciate all of you.
And our tech support.
Oh, and our tech support, of course, yes. Anyone that I'm not mentioning. Um, sorry, I just need to close something on here to, what is wrong? Okay, our upcoming events. The Career Ready Advisory Committee will meet on November twentieth at three-thirty P M. in room three hundred of the Annex at the School Board Central Office. Um, the V S B A Annual Convention is taking place this week, starting tomorrow, uh, November twentieth through twenty-second. I think most, if not all, board members will be there all day for those dates at the Williamsburg Lodge. Um, Policy Committee will meet on December ninth at eleven-thirty A M. in room two oh three at the School Board Central Office, and the Student Advisory Committee will meet on December eighteenth at three P M. at Jamestown High School Media Center. And I was going to say our one and only upcoming meeting, but we have several special call meetings, um, for our search process. Uh, we have a special call meeting on, uh, December second at nine A M. in room three oh nine of the Annex in School Board Central Office. A special call meeting on, another one on December second at five P M., also in room three oh nine of the Annex. And a third special call meeting on December fourth at three P M., also in room three oh nine of the Annex. We will have our joint meeting with, um, James City County Board of Supervisors and Williamsburg City Council on, uh, December sixth at eight-thirty A M. at the James City County Rec Center. And our closed session on December tenth will start at four P M. in room three hundred of the Annex, followed by the work session with action items. Also December tenth at four-thirty P M., also in room three hundred of the Annex. Alright, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.